Call this meeting of the school board to order. We'll start with the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, equal to this world with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for joining us. To start by introducing our newest member, Monica McLaughlin is sitting to my left presently. And I'll take attendance. David Bestman.
Present.
Alicia Lawson.
Here.
Tim Bess.
Here.
Monica McLaughlin.
Here.
Catherine Emery.
Here.
Ivy Corliss.
Here.
Joseph Stenkes. Okay, and for people who might watch this later, I'm running this meeting to start because this is our organizational meeting. And so we will begin by electing the chairperson. So at this time, I will entertain nominations for for a chairperson.
I nominate Catherine.
Catherine Emery.
I nominate Alicia. I'm second.
Any other nominations?
I'm ninth second.
You don't need a second on nominations, and that's okay. So I will say that nomination ceases. So at this point, the two nominees are Catherine Emery and Alicia Lawson. And so I will start with Ivy. Just tell me who your pick is.
Alicia.
Catherine.
Catherine.
Monica.
Alicia.
Tim.
Catherine.
And Alicia.
Alicia.
If you're waiting.
Yeah.
Okay, well, that's three votes for Alicia and two for Catherine. And so Alicia, you are the new chair. Congratulations, and you can swap seats for the vice chair. So once Alicia gets settled, I will turn the meeting over to her for the election of vice chair.
At this time, I'll ask for nominations for vice chair.
I nominate Monica.
I nominate Catherine.
Nomination ceases.
I update the new policy agenda.
Are there any adjustments that need to be made to the agenda?
There are no adjustments this evening.
At this time, I will ask if there are any public comments.
Is there a person on the table?
One person. It's going to. Singing, I'll move on in our agenda. We'll turn it over to the reports. First one will have the superintendent's report.
Okay, I don't have anything to add. Most of my report was in my superintendent's report, which I've emailed out to you. Obviously, the meeting last Friday wasn't going to get into the packet, so it was emailed to you, and I'm going to be covering it as part of the meeting. There is no financial report. I know last Friday, Denise was on as part of the audit, and she thought the report was fine. I looked at it. She's unfortunately, she's been out with COVID, so I've not had a chance to connect with her, and I'm not comfortable with the report that was there. So we will not have a financial report for January, plus for December and January. And there are no appointments, reservations, or changes since last Friday.
And there is no school board chair report.
You want me to speak?
Sure. Well, thank you for your confidence, both of you who nominated me. A bit of a surprise, and I'm a little shaky right now because that's brand new. Certainly not what I had ever planned. So this will be very new. But I do think I'm certainly fit for the role. Looking ahead, I'll have a child in each of the schools next year. So I have one in the high school, one in the middle school, two in the middle school. Oh, I have five children. It's hard to keep track sometimes. So I think with a parent who has children in all of the schools, I certainly will have eyes and ears and, you know, I have been there with the schools volunteering in the schools. And so I'm excited for this new challenge. And it is a challenge, harsh shoes to fill with the super being. But I think I can do it. And I really appreciate your support. So thank you.
I have a question for clarity. Let me make sure. Yes, I have a question for clarity. The report that we received via email, is this an annual report? Is it just a monthly report?
My report?
Yes.
I make superintendent's report every meeting.
Okay.
And it's usually much more than just an agenda in the packet. But the meeting just last Friday, there was no time to do anything. That's why there's no minutes tonight because I couldn't get the minutes out to you guys until I finished yesterday.
And forgive me if I'm out of order. I'm brand new, I'm learning everything. When do we discuss or have questions about the report? When is that appropriate?
Well, my superintendent's report is when I and Alicia asked if anybody has any questions about the reports. She will.
I'll get there.
Well, you're in the vise, and you want to do that, we need to back to you.
Okay, let's go back. Let's go back to that since we're wrong right here. Does anyone have any questions about the superintendent's report since I neglected to ask?
I do. So some of my questions are these. So I see the two primary things that you have outlined here. Mr. Hodgkin has concerns. The teacher negotiations. So in light of the need to get the minimum salaries to $50,000 annually by 2028. So that is a big jump. And as you said, our current minimum salary is $4,500. Do we have detailed printout of what all of our current, de-identified, sure, but what all of our current teachers receive so that we could have a good understanding of how much of a jump this is going to be?
Well, it's I'm not sure that I would make that available during negotiations because we are in negotiations right now. So that information will be made available to you through your negotiators at the appropriate time. But I mean, you can do the math to figure out that it's, to go from $40,500 to $50,000 is a pretty significant jump. But we have to and I just have to be kind of careful what I say publicly because it is negotiations and that is confidential.
Sure, but then as you said, it's a base pay. So if we are to bring in a new teacher right out of college and she were to start in 2028 at $50,000, I would expect that we would make sure that our teachers with experience and long tenure have their salaries increased commiserantly. So that's why I think it's imperative that we take a look at exactly what those numbers are as soon as we can.
And your negotiators will do that. And that's exactly, I mean, you are correct, but I really can't say much more than that outside of negotiations.
And when do you expect those to be concluded?
I think we have meetings scheduled until March.
I have one other question if I may. Okay, the other question is, I see that we have real staffing concerns at our middle school. And I wonder, what the plan, I would love to hear from Laurie Snail. You know, what what are your goals from that? What's your wish list? We have too few teachers, it sounds like, to meet the need well. Why are some of the reasons that you think we're not retaining teachers? I wonder if we do exit interviews with teachers either resign or are asked to resign so that we can get a good handle on that.
Actually, that's not the issue. It's not about retention of teachers. And again, it's part of the, really the only thing that's on the agenda tonight is a deeper discussion of all of these issues. Which is, I think, why Chairperson Lawson didn't ask for questions because that's, it's on the agenda next, which is what I said.
Any other questions? Singing, then we'll move on. All right, we'll move on to item 4.3 committee reports. Finance.
Yes, we met, we did 9A, 9B, 10A, 10B, 11A. Then we did payroll, 11, 1, 12, 13, 14, 14, 1.
And do you have a next meeting scheduled?
No, we do not.
Policy. We have not met and we do not have a meeting scheduled yet. And negotiations?
As I just said, we, let's actually, we'll be meeting tomorrow. I think it's our third meeting. It's our second official meeting. We have, as Chairperson Hooper explained last time, she's going to continue, by the way, as part of the negotiations. And we have a series of meetings scheduled. I think it takes us to March. And we meet every other week. So we meet tomorrow, and then we'll meet Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, and so on. And we have, the way it's set up is we have the first three regular meetings, not the organizational one, which we did first. We can bring new issues to the table. And after that, we can add issues only by consensus.
All right, that concludes our committee reports. And we'll move on to item number 4.4 administrators' report. There are none. Item 4.5 budget obstacles discussion.
Okay, now feel free, all of you, to weigh in or to ask the administrators who are here, particularly Ms. Snail. But I want to go, I'm going to call my report up. Okay, before I get too deep into this, next Monday, the chair was in the last Friday. I am meeting with the town council right here, 7 o'clock. And this will be, there's basically three things that we're going to be talking about. This is a big one. So if any of you are available, able to come out and support where we're going to go with the school budget, that would be great. Secondly, before I get into this too much, we talked a little bit last Friday about possible forums. I think this is going to be a great idea for a forum or two as we go through the budget season to give the community an opportunity to hear more about what is going on with the budget and why. There's no doubt, I haven't seen even the preliminary budget yet. Denise is still putting it together. But there's no doubt in my mind with what I know is on the horizon for us that we're going to be looking at a pretty significant increase to the tax period. So before we can ask them to consider any sort of significant increase, they're going to need to have an opportunity to ask some questions and get a further understanding. So one or more forums seems like a reasonable thing to expect down the road. So the big things is, Monica pointed out, is it's not so much toward negotiations, but we're not really supposed to talk publicly about negotiations. But I had to sort of put that in it because there is pending legislation. I probably realized that afterwards, that I don't know how people read that. The legislation to increase to $50,000 has not passed. However, I've done this job long enough. It's in the queue. It hasn't failed either. It's a carryover bill this year. And what has happened in the past, when I remember when the state minimum went to $30,000, that took a couple of different sessions. There's a great deal of interest in it. And so it took a while for $30,000. It took two or three sessions for $40,000, which has only fairly recently been adopted to get into place. And the initial attempt to get $50,000 in was actually for the next fiscal year. And that just, that got backburned. It didn't get the feet, it got backburned to basically say, there's no way in the world we're going to come up with funding or expect schools and communities to come up with funding to support $50,000 minimum. However, the what's in the queue now is essentially for them to give us until fiscal year 2028, which is four more budgets. And so that, in theory, would give us time. But as I put in here, it's all frustrating because it's I can't see them fully funding that whole amount of money statewide. So our current salary is $40,500. And I know there's a strong expectation, not just from the association, but from me, that we need to we need to move forward with that. We still continue to be in the bottom half of salaries for our region. And so we, you know, we're going to have, we've made pretty good progress with the current contract that's running out. But we still have a long ways to go. So there is no doubt in my mind that's going to be, that's going to be huge. And, you know, there will be numbers. It's more gaps early. There will be numbers provided to you guys and obviously provided to the community about what that impact is going to be. It's going to be, it's going to be significant. You may or may not be aware that salaries and benefits make up close to 90% of our budget. So that's going to be big. Would I ask a question about that?
I do. So as a member of the public, during last meeting, I asked the auditor if we had some more specific details on the spending. So before, I am committed to, and be glad to show the ball to being fiscally responsible, I would like for us to have the opportunity to review those numbers, not exactly in line item detail, but certainly more detail than we saw in the audit, to know where the money is coming from before we go with our handout for more money.
Okay. So moving on, the, what I say, this needs to be, I think, end of our mantra moving forward and hopefully we can do it collectively as a board, is that we can't afford to just kick the can down the road and say we're not going to address this obvious impact on our communities, not just North York, but all over the state of Maine. We can't just put it off. And I can tell you this, and I'm sure I'll get pushed back from the board on this, we can't cut our way into, say, enough money to make this work. Worth our while into, I think, that point. I have some data for you to, that I want to share with you. You've seen this, some of you over with us. Last year, it's a study that Pat Hopkins, who's the superintendent in Gardner, did this past year, comparing ourselves to the total of 12 area schools. And I shared this information with you, but I wanted to give it to you to have in your hands. And I'm going to give it to the town council on Monday as well. Bottom line is, I don't have these numbers, but it's good out to where it says total per pupil expenditure. Hollowell has pays $16,000, furnishes $7.97 a person. If you look at all those categories above, and I didn't put in debt service and all other because it's very, it's sort of district specific. It's not, not everybody has debt service. Not everybody has all other. Probably should have taken a CTE out of there to accept. I just didn't think of it when I was getting at that. But if you look at all those other categories above, those are the 11 areas for the articles for our budget. And you can break it down by each of those. You can see, I've mentioned it, Hollowell is paying $16,000, furnishing $7.97. They are the highest per pupil expenditure in the school system in our area. And Gardner, which not surprisingly was listed first here because Pat did this work, is the lowest. They're 12th. They're at the very bottom. They're 12 out of 12. The least amount of money spent per child. They spend $12,846.16 per child. We are, the column is the longer green one out there, and we spend $13,871.33. That makes us 10th out of these 12. There are two schools in this kind of region who spend less money per student than us only to, and it's, as you can see here, it's Gardner and Terriff. Everybody else spends more money per student than us. If we were at the state average, which is a big reach, so I'm not suggesting we should shoot for the state average because, as you can see, but look at these numbers, there's only one school that's above state average on this list, and that is, as I said, RSU2. Everybody else is below or at or below state average. But if we were to add, if we were to get to the state average, that our budget would go up by $1.9 million. So from just an average standpoint, we were about $1.9 million behind. I would not say that should be our goal, but our goal should be somewhere closer to, you know, getting up there. And so that's sort of the backdrop of what my concerns are there around the funding and the $50,000, which may or may not come to fruition, but it's going to come to fruition soon enough. It would be irresponsible of us to bury our heads in the sand and think it's not going to happen. There's a lot of support for that around the state. Within the legislature, I should say that. So that information is for you to have and to share if you wish. The second thing is, this is, as I put in, I don't remember which report I put in, but basically staffing concerns are a big concern for us. I did some research, particularly at the middle school, where I know there's always been issues with scheduling at the middle school. And I know there's concerns about student performance and student scores, and that's such a thing. So looking at what the staffing patterns have been. And honestly, the staffing patterns at the grade school are reduced, but our numbers are down a little bit. But they're in pretty good shape. We made some decisions last year that assisted them. And the high school is also okay. They're not in great shape. They can still kind of do what they need to do. But the middle school has received, has had the second most, I mean, the most losses of personnel over the last dozen years or so from when our scores were really high. I don't think there's any reason to not make the correlation between reduction in staff and the reduction in student test scores. For example, not for example, specifically, about 10 years or so ago, middle school had five core teachers. And core meaning, the, well, back then, it used to be reading and writing taught separately, science, social studies, and math. So there were five core teachers at each grade level for a total of 15 core teachers at the middle school. There are currently 10. Which means that, and I've chitzed with you a little bit before, but I'm getting more specific as we get towards budget. We have to teach two areas, science and social studies, where teachers, we only have two core teachers at that level. So they're teaching not only bigger classes, but they're also teaching multiple class, multiple grade levels. We have somebody doing eighth grade language arts, somebody doing eighth grade math, you know. But we have more than one person doing social studies and more than one person doing science at those levels. So that's a full third of the staff. We have lost a full third of our population. And our population has actually stabilized over the last five years. So it's a, it's a direct cause. It needs to be problematic. It is problematic. It needs to be addressed. In addition to that, our Unified Arts or Specials or Rem, and people use different terms in different places. But it's always a challenge duties, which is a legitimate concern, but not probably going to cause a lot, the community to have a lot of concern. But our Unified Arts, probably about a dozen years ago, there was zero shared staff at the middle school. All the middle school staff were middle school staff. Now, the only things that we have dedicated at the middle school are present in art. All of the other Unified Arts are shared with the high school. And the reality of this is that in that situation where middle school, high school, and I know I've been a member of the districts as the middle school principal when this happens, if there's going to be shared staff between the middle school and the high school, the high school will have priority. They will get the staff when they need them. They have to. They're providing the credits. It's just the way it works. That puts an incredible burden on the middle school to schedule Unified Arts at a time that makes any sense at all. In addition to that, we have zero health teachers at the middle school. So I'm going to be strongly recommending, and certainly can hear from Ms. Snail if you want to, but she's welcome to speak. We've already had this conversation a few times. My recommendation next year is going to be that we add two core teachers to the middle school and a Unified Arts teacher, which would be a health teacher for the middle school. And that should be the beginning of a plan. And that should be the beginning of a plan to look at staffing, uh, district Y, because it's, that's not the, you know, if we're going to be realistic about it, we would be looking at asking for probably, um, two or three additional staff beyond that, so maybe looking at five to six at the middle school. There's no way we're going to do that. So, tho- those are, those are very legit concerns, and I think we're going to need to work together to, um, get the message out to the community that, you know, we, we can't continue to be one point nine million dollars behind the state, um, averaging per pupil expenditures. We don't need to get there, we don't need to be at state average, um, but we're going to need to make some pretty significant increases. We've made an incredible investment in our system over the last three and a half years in our infrastructure, uh, in our buildings, very much needed, buildings were neglected. It took millions of dollars to get them in a, in a decent shape, we're still not there. But we're definitely heading in the right direction, and now we have to focus our attention on, um, the, looking at our staffing. And we're not going to legitimately address our, um, academic, you know, scores and stuff by not addressing our staff. We didn't want to, I mean, obviously, from my perspective, and I may be a little biased, uh, making the decision to have the director teaching and learning and somebody's going to focus, you know, at least the one filter for the whole, uh, school system to go through, for, you know, teaching and learning, that's the most important work that we do. So, uh, so just finishing up from what my superintendent's report, the other thing I'm going to talk to the council about, they had mentioned this before, that we are looking, we've had a number of meetings, including a lot of people, including the town manager, the chief of police, the high school principal, Joel, um, I can't think of who else, but, about, uh, trying to get the, the town to, uh, assume Ramla Road as a town road. It is not currently, has never been a town road, which means, um, safety issues and concerns speeding, being the specific one on Ramla Road is not enforceable presently because it's not a town road. So the town takes it over, we can, they, they, they have a good presence, Chief Rowland and the, the, the police have been awesome, uh, providing us, uh, some help, but they, you know, they, they're not in a position to write any tickets and such. So, uh, that's on there. And then the last thing is Josh Wheeler is going to join me, and we're going to talk a little bit about the obstacles that we've been facing with the electric buses.
Thank you.
Yeah, anything, that was my presentation, now they can talk.
Got it. Um, any questions for Jim? Yes. Okay, so, um, I understand, um, that though we may not be able to cut our way, as you say, to meeting the increased costs for teacher salaries, this doesn't mean, um, that we don't have to cut, never, regardless. It doesn't mean, and unless we can see details in a very granular way, the board doesn't know exactly where the money is being spent and if there are ways in which we can make cuts or move money around. You're talking about, uh, a twofold increase, you know, look at increasing staff, um, for good reason, and increasing staff salaries. So before we start moving in that direction and plotting it out, why don't we take a real good look at exactly where the money is going?
So, uh, you have not been through the budget process yet, but you will get, once the budget is created and released, the board will get a full copy of the entire forty-something page budget with every single, um, line, with every single, uh, with a, with a two or three year, two year history of expenditures and, and all those areas. You will have all of that to work from.
Very good. I would also like, really, uh, like, if it's appropriate, Alicia, to hear from Lori Snell about that. So I'm wondering what you think the low staffing in the middle school is due to, and why do you think that, and what are your ideas for, um, remeding it?
So I am a community member, my children have all been through the school, so I have been a parent with all that staffing. And now I'm the administrator with few, uh, a lot of less, less teachers, sorry. Um, what's since happened over the past few years is when there has been a retirement, that the position has not been replaced. It's the, correct, right, we've reshuffled, we've restructured, so those things have not, uh, those teachers have not been replaced. Whereas a social studies teacher or a science teacher has retired, we haven't hired a new one. We are like, okay, we now have two social studies teachers, so we are going to take one for eighth grade, one for seventh grade, and then we're splitting the other grade. So that's right. And then as a result of that, we don't have collaborative school teams. So I can't have a sixth grade team meeting during the day. I have to work within contractual timeframes, working after school or before school, and then I have a limited amount of time to have that team time. Because as my sixth grade teachers are trying to meet, one of them is teaching social studies or one of them is teaching science, um, same six, seven, eight, so all of that happens. As a result, two, we only have two full-time unified art teachers, we have an art teacher and a physical education teacher. Physical education is so important for our children, especially at this age developmentally. Um, so we are very fortunate that we have that, but they are also a whole room teacher. So again, they are not able to attend some of these meetings during a grade level time because they're teaching while they're other, so if the eighth grade team could be meeting, the physical education teacher may not be able to join that team because she has a class at that time. Same with science or social studies. So it has not been due to retention or any of that, because the teachers we have here have longevity. It's because through, uh, through retirement and whatnot, and restructuring and looking at the budget, looking at that over the past several years, they have not been replaced, it's tried to be absorbed. We've also looked at restructuring, they have restructured some of our teaching duties. So ELA now is one subject, whereas ten years ago, we had a reading teacher, and then we had a writing teacher. Now philosophically and educationally, ELA works together and we can do that. Um, but historically, what happened is when the reading teacher retired, they did not replace that person. So every teacher taught reading. I am a, you know, my background's in special ed and elementary education. I have specific reading instruction strategies, so that's something. So now my ELA teachers are teaching reading and they're teaching writing, but they're trained in that. That's their specialty, not to bring in someone else. So that's a little bit of history. My idea and my plan, working with her husband, working with my team at the middle school, is to have a full complement content area in each grade level. So I would have ELA, math, science and social studies, all four core teachers for sixth, seventh, eighth grade. And then we'll work on our unified arts pieces and bringing all that together. Because again, as I tell my teachers, they're teachers of children, not teachers of content. They're teachers of children because I want to look at the whole child, but they all do have specialties and specialty areas. And they can then address the learning needs of students, they meet their students where they are with their expertise of content.
Thank you, that's very, very helpful. Any other questions?
I, I don't know that I should be asking a question, but I guess I, I am interested in feedback from the rest of the board because that's a pretty aggressive approach, and I know you just kind of really hearing about it, but I, I think this, you know, you turn and ask Lori more questions or whatever, I, I, it's, it's, um, it's going to be important that we collectively work together as a board, if we want to sell this in the community, uh, sell it to the town council. Uh, they're going to need to know, and, and I need, you need to make sure you understand the information that I've provided to you and that you agree with it. If you think it's not important, um, then, or not a high priority, and I'm not, you know, I'm, I'm not trying to put any words in people's mouth, but I need some feedback from the board about, uh, you know, I'm going to meet with these guys next Monday, and I could say, I, I presented this to the board last month saying I got, you know, a couple of questions, that was it. It seems like this, you know, if you're not, I, I guess I just would like to get a sense that the board is as concerned about this as we are.
Um, I'll comment on this. Uh, we've definitely, in the years past, I'm not sure when, we have lost a ton of, cut a ton of staff somewhere along the line. And I think we kind of need a long-term plan, I think I've said this the last couple of years, I brought this up. We're, we're spending way too little, um, and we have way too less staff. We can't, we can't add, can't fix this in a year, it's impossible. Uh, so can we really go to the priorities, and I think we've done that last year, I think the year before, we keep adding staff. And, um, the priority this year is the middle school. These, I think the science and social studies is probably the number one priority. Um, but also if you're looking at the unified arts, I mean, that, we need, I would think several teachers. I think Jay even said the problem with music. We have one teacher for the entire district, um, and going back and forth is-
No, we have one in the middle school as well. We have one at the regional-
That's, that's why, I'm sorry, that's what I meant, I was talking about the two other schools. Uh, going back and forth is difficult, um, and stressful, and, um, and wanting to retain, um, so I think we have a really good music teacher right now, um, we want him to stay here. We have to look at that, and again, you have industrial arts possibly in the future, I, I know that's definitely not right now. Um, foreign language, the health teacher, I think we need all these, but we need to prioritize maybe a multi-year plan. Really looking at a scope, also a scope and sequence. When, when do you think we can really add these? Just so we can see, it's going to happen, but to a successful way, so we're going to get this budget passed with the town. I would definitely say the two, the science or social studies is going to happen, but that's not even a, anything a question. Uh, but the, the big thing is, should we add, I don't know, should we add three staff? Should we add a unified, I thought you said unified teacher? Which one would that be on the music hall, it would be for this year, health, okay.
Because we do-
Yeah, I mean, I, I, yes, and I, yeah, I, yeah, I, no, but I did get, when are we going to add, you know, next year, are we looking at, and year after that? Do we need that, what staff are we adding, I think we need to really look at that.
Um, I, I just, what the, I'm just, it's concerning hearing what Lori had stated because why didn't anybody look at the projected impacts of merging positions than hiring to replace? I mean, any type of, it's just, I don't know, I just don't know why that wasn't looked at. I mean, if we kept merging positions and replacing, instead of just replacing, now we're shutting ourselves in the foot, now we're going to try and fix this mess and act for all this money. So these are things that could have been looked at from previous, but now we have this, this serious issue on hand. Because our, our children are behind academically. COVID has placed them back, I think with the same three years, but then if they look at all the test scores, these kids are a decade back, um, in the core academics that they should be, that is concerning. Um, so, I mean, we really need to look at all the finances that we are spending. I agree with a lot of what Monica said, there's a lot of frivolous stuff that, that money can be better placed for teachers because getting our kids their core academics for their future is a priority. So this teacher shortage at the middle school really needs to be looked at, and I think a special agenda item, so that we can all sit and talk, talk about it.
I agree, I think it should be a priority. Um, and, um, I, I have another question for you, Lori, and that is how far off are we? I hear your goal for having four core teachers for sixth, seventh and eighth. How many positions are we talking to?
I, that, it would include a science and a social studies teacher for next year. Um, and just, just to, I need us to kind of answer your question. It's not something that has just recently happened. We haven't had teachers, um, retire recently that have not been replaced. This has been in, um, you know, in position for, the, the staffing that we have have been there for several years. So this was previous to the, the current administration, current board, all of that.
Yeah, that I do know, because it takes quite a while to get there. And then now you're fairly new, have to try and get everything corrected with the ones that are impacting greatly other students.
Mm-hmm.
Because if teachers are spread thin, these kids aren't getting the attention, the core academic information, teachers don't have enough time to get better, um, work and knowledge to the children. So really, the children are the ones that are greatly impacted.
Correct, they are.
They're actually behind right now because of this pandemic and struggling just to get up those habits. Like today, these kids don't, um, because of that big delay of being homeschooled, that staying in school, they, they just don't have that structure. So it's now giving those kids mindset back onto that structure of school. But yeah, no, I know it's definitely been quite a while to get where we're at.
So, um, so that we can move forward, when you move forward your budget for next year, can you include what it would look like with those two positions filled and with a health teacher? So that we can look at that, see how that fits into the whole vision?
I have already submitted, uh, the pieces to Mr. Hutchins and to, uh, the business, the finance director that will be working on that as well. As a building administrator, I don't put personnel in there. I request, and it goes through the superintendent, um, and it also has the impact of if those teachers were to be hired, what does that look like as far as supplies and teaching and, and that? And I work directly with director of technology, director of teaching and learning, facilities, all of that as well. And I, I will just say that, uh, Mr. Burnham, myself, Mrs. Dischulius, and Mr. DePore have already met this year to talk about what would we do for next year as far as shared staff, scheduling, all of that. We really are working very hard to align ourselves and, and work together as a team. We will, um, work again with Mrs. Randall at the grade school in helping with our transition and where they are, and they did an amazing job with us this past year to transition us to we knew where our students were, our sixth grade students, where they were coming in academically and what we doing that. We, the middle school really is that middle child, and we're, we're trying to bridge that gap for twelve. But we're already working on the schedule for next year and how do we meet the needs of our students for both high school and middle school.
Kudos to you about those, I heard great things about the kids, about how much they love that transition. I know a lot of kids of that age are just stepping up to your school. And just a reminder, um, address the questions to the chair. Thank you. So I think there's some really good questions, and I like Tim's idea about coming up with a long-term plan, and that's key, um, some really great feedback. Anyone else?
I'd like to, to weigh in again, because I, just some overtones or undertones, whatever, the, the conversation, and I just want to be really clear about a couple of things. Uh, this has happened over a period of time. Uh, when I said it was, you know, ten plus years ago, that the, both our scores were really good and our staffing was really good. Like, and I started my comments with this, the things that were being neglected at that time in this system were the facilities issues, um, to the tune of millions of dollars. Uh, so when I came on board three and a half years ago, it was very clear to me, made clear to me that the, the priority was on facilities. We had just spent a hundred thousand plus dollars on the facility study, and that we needed to get the facilities up to speed. We were fortunate in a very strange sort of way that we had all that HSR funds and we focused it, um, you know, I think very correctly on addressing building issues. We got all the roofs done way ahead of schedule, we got the boards all done, we got all those things. Uh, and, and then when we sort of focusing on, uh, the reality of why are our test scores, which have been dropping way more than three and a half or four years, they've been dropping quite a while before that, why is that phenomenon existing, what's missing? Uh, the first thing the board identified was having somebody, I already mentioned it, having Megan B. in that position to coordinate the work that's happening now. Um, she's been working her tail off to, to try and work with the staff to make that happen. Uh, and I think with a great deal of success, but I think, take a look at what- But I think taking a look at what else needs to happen. And the, I I I think it's a waste of time to to go back and sort of say, you know, who's to blame for this? It doesn't matter. It's the reality of where we're at right now and, you know, Tim brought up the whole thing about a plan. We put together a plan for a facility, we're putting together a plan now that'll be for staffing. And we need to address those issues and, you know, it's it's all this stuff. It'll be interesting to see the the tenor of this board after we go through the budget process and you get to see how much awareness, it feels like people aren't aware that the board has and and ultimately control with respect to the budget. But at the end of the day, that doesn't really make any difference unless we're all on the same page, pushing and, you know, rowing in the same direction.
Thank you. You don't have any old business, correct? Um, new business?
No new business.
No new business? Um, suggested, suggested additions for future agendas by school board members?
Just a quick comment, we never discussed the committees.
We did.
We did, are we staying, are we, no, I mean.
Oh, no, no, you're right.
We got it assigned to make sure we walk in, we use a one committee.
So I usually, sorry, usually what happens, and I haven't, I didn't know the chair was going to be, so really didn't have the conversation. But typically in the next meeting or sometime between now and maybe the next meeting, Chairperson Lawson will send out something to all of you, asking you what committees you wish to be assigned to and not. And we don't usually do it at the organization meeting, but it will obviously, so you'll maintain your committee right now and you can let us know where you want to be, you can sort of play with any committee you want to be.
I'm going to be visiting. Okay. So any additions to future targets, suggestions? Seeing that, we'll move on. School board comments?
I'd just like to congratulate Alicia and Monica on their positions and I look forward to building our our relationship on this, on our board team and see all the great things we can do here on out for our school and our communities.
Alicia, I would like to ask if we can, when Jim goes to talk with the council, prioritize talking about the positions at the middle school that are needed. The legislation is still pending and although it it may likely pass, I think it's a lot to bring to the town council all at once. So that is my suggestion. Thank you. Any comments from the students? There's no executive session tonight.
No.
I don't have any comments. So does that mean we're done? Okay, so with that being said, I call this meeting to a close at six fifty-four.